Good afternoon, everyone. For the record, today is August 26, 2025. It's 1:00 P. M. This is a City of Prescott City Council's study session. We'll start off with roll call, please.
Mayor, good.
President.
Mayor Protem Ken, tell me.
Here.
Councilwoman Freworth.
Here.
Councilman Gambogi. Is not here. I'll record when he arrives. Councilman Grady.
Present.
Councilman Montoya.
Here.
And Councilman Moore.
Here.
Okay, we have a single item on our agenda today for discussion. Presentation and discussion regarding 15% alternative design concept plans for effluent wastewater pipeline and SR-89 improvements. This is study session two of two in accordance with Resolution 2024-1876.
Thank you, Mayor.
Hello, Gwen.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council.
Gwen, before you get started, I just wanted to go over a couple of things for the council and for the audience. So today's study session discussion is an opportunity for the council to receive an update from staff and Kim Lee Horn regarding the completion of 15% design concept plans for SR-89 Improvement Project in accordance with the adoption of Resolution Number 2024-1896. Staff has an approximately one hour and 15-minute-long presentation to get through, and following this presentation, there will be council discussion. Therefore, public comment during the study session will be limited, if at all. All comment cards that are remaining will be rolled over to the public hearing, which will be conducted during the 3:00 P. M. voting meeting as Item 11B. During the public hearing, citizens are provided with an opportunity to offer comments regarding the project. The public hearing is not an open house. Therefore, there will be no sign-in sheet or special comment cards or displays, and all standards of decorum remain in effect for these portions of the meeting. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me okay? Want to make sure you can before we get started. Gwen Rowich, Public Works Director here at the City of Prescott. Today, as the mayor mentioned, we're going to talk about the effluent wastewater pipeline and SR-89 Improvement Project. This is the sixth public meeting that we've had on this project so far. So we're going to talk today a little bit about why we're here, how the city plans for projects like this one, where we are in the process, and some of the themes that we're seeing in the public comments that we have received to date here in the 60-day public comment period. So why are we here? The main reason we're here today is because we have an effluent pipe, a 24-inch effluent pipe, that has had more than eight failures in the last two and a half years and more failures than that in the last five years. This pipeline is not the only pipe that is scheduled to go into this roadway corridor. We also will be constructing a new 24-inch pipe for centralization, and I'll talk about that in a few minutes. And there is an existing 24-inch sewer pipe that takes raw sewage from the city to the airport reclamation facility today. So when we started to have these numerous failures of the effluent pipe, we knew we needed to move it up in our five-year capital plan to take care of it. But we also knew that when we went in to replace this pipe, we needed to build a third pipe in the corridor. And when we do that, we're going to destroy the road that is already there today. There will be very little of the roadway left once we dig up and replace and install ultimately three 24-inch pipes in this corridor. So that's the time to ask the question, should we be making other improvements in this corridor at the same time? So we asked the question, what should we do with the roadway? The expected lifespan of any new roadway is 20 to 30 years with proper maintenance and pavement preservation techniques. And we're going to talk a little bit in this presentation about where this project originally was in our capital timeline and, you know, why we brought it forward. We also want to be cognizant of our fiscal responsibility. When we spend 10 or more million dollars to build a road, we want to make sure that it's really going to be there for the full 20 to 30 years and that we get every penny out of that road that we can, because I can tell you, in the public works world, we never have enough money to do the things we need to do, much less the things we want to do. And then we're also going to talk a little bit about the level of service of this road. The level of service is something that our consultant and our staff have talked about in previous meetings, and it's a grading system, A through F. How does the road function? Is, you know, just traffic free flow? Are there periods of delay? Are there periods of stop? And where does this road fall into the levels of service today and where is it projected to be by 2034 timeframe? So we're going to talk about those things today. But those are the main reasons why we're having these conversations, and I cannot emphasize enough that the number-one priority is the pipe. That pipe continues to fail. It failed last Christmas. We had a hard road closure that was very inconvenient to the citizens of this community in terms of the traveling public. It failed a year ago around 4th of July. That was also very inconvenient, but fortunately we had a detour we could use at that time. And, you know, here in 2025, we haven't had a failure yet. I hope I'm not jinxing myself by saying that, but that is the urgency. That is where staff's focus is. Where the community decides to go with the roadway is a community decision, one the staff will respect regardless of which way we head with that choice. So how do we plan projects in public works? Well, believe it or not, we plan as much as 20 years or more in advance for projects here in the City of Prescott. We have several different methods that we use for that. Our water and wastewater systems are in what's called a hydraulic model. We have a computerized model that tells us where all of our pipes are and how they function, and we can change things in that model to see how it'll impact the rest of the system and so on and so forth. In terms of roadways, we have traffic studies that not only the city performs, but private development performs that tell us how roadways are going to react to increases in traffic and changes in traffic. And then, of course, the consultants and the staff, we primarily lead the way for those modeling and studies so that we can forecast what projects need to be in our five-, 10-, and even 20-year capital program. Sometimes during the course of those processes, the timing shifts because the data tells us something different than what an earlier study or model might have told us. We're always calibrating those models and studies against real-time data, what's actually happening out in the real world at the time compared to our studies. So we're always doing those data and time analyses. That's part of our job as professionals here at the city. And then we're always looking at, or at least I am, when can we pay for that? When can we pay for that project? How urgent is it compared to other projects that are on the five-year or the 10-year or the 20-year CIP? So I'm just going to talk a little bit about, pardon me, I need to catch up with myself. I got my notes here. We're going to talk about, a little bit about how we plan for wastewater infrastructure. So as I mentioned, we use studies that are updated every five years. We first began wastewater, water and wastewater master plans back in 2008. Believe it or not, prior to that, we didn't have an actual master plan, but we have had that in place for close to 20 years now. And in 2013 Water Model, it identified the need for centralization. Now, centralization is the process by which we are combining our SunDog wastewater treatment plant and our airport water reclamation facility into one facility. And we've been working on this since 2013. We've spent millions of dollars. The council at that time made a decision that we would centralize the two plants, and we began the process of doing that. We're still doing it, and we will continue to be doing it for probably close to another seven to 10 years before we complete the centralization project because it's the entire city into one treatment plant. So in 2015, the city made the decision to develop what's called the roadmap to centralization. And that roadmap is what tells us what improvements we need to do and where in order to complete the centralization project. So to fund that, in 2016, we began including centralization projects and specifically this wastewater project into our five-year and 10-year capital improvement program. In 2018, the wastewater model identified the need for additional sewer capacity along SR-89 based on new developments that were coming into the city. In 2019, we added this project into what's called the Infrastructure Improvement Plan. The Infrastructure Improvement Plan is the basis for the amount of money that we collect in development impact fees from new homes being built in the city. So we knew that this pipeline in particular and centralization was impacted by new growth, and so we added it to the IIP, and we do collect impact fees for a portion of the replacement and upsizing, or the new pipes, I'll say, for payment through the development impact And we've talked about this before, so I'll go over it kind of briefly, but there's a 17-mile stretch of SR-89 between SR-69 and the Road 3 North intersection in Chino Valley. From 2005 to 2019, ADOT has been methodically widening this road along that corridor, and the only remaining two-lane section is the two and a half miles from Willow Lake Road to the Fippen Trail. Now, that doesn't mean that the city and the region hasn't been watching this section of road and including it in our long-range transportation planning documents. So since the 2035, now, let me back up. Central Yabapai Metropolitan Planning Organization, or I'm just going to call them SIMPO now that I've said that, develops a regional transportation plan. Every five years, they update it. And this project has been included in SIMPO's RTP since 2011. That was their 2035 RTP. So 2035, 2040, 2045, and the most recent one, 2050, this project is included in the region, has been included in the regional transportation plan as a road of regional significance that needed widening slash improvements. So again, in 2019, the city included this in the Street Infrastructure Improvement Plan, and we started collecting development impact fees. In fiscal year '22, when the pipeline started to become an issue, that's when we knew we needed to bring the pipeline project up in the schedule because of how many times it was breaking. We added funding into the street fund portion of Public Works' capital project budget in the amount of $26.5 million so that we could put the road back. We knew we were going to have to put the road back, but that's also when we began talking internally and then pretty soon after that externally about what we were going to do with this road. As we continue to study the project and get more information and data through our consultant Kim Lee Horn and their consultants, in 2026, we increased the budget to 38 million. And we're going to talk a little bit later in the presentation about where the funding is going to come from to pay for this project. So where are we in the process? Believe it or not, we're two and a half years into this process, at least the staff is. I think the public's about two years into this process. We started the public survey in June of 2023, and we did receive a good response to our survey in terms of the number of people that responded. The questionnaire was centered more around what kinds of improvements people would like to see, but that's not the response that we got. We did get some responses in that regard, but mainly we got a lot of questions. People had concerns about what it would look like. They didn't want us to remove any rocks. There were lots of comments that came in. Those, that information's on our public website if you want to familiarize yourself with the comments that came in as part of the survey. But from a staff perspective, we were looking for direction on what the public would like to see if we widened the road. And we did get some comment in that regard, but it was pretty small. Most of the comment was about whether we should do it at all. Sorry, forgot to advance the slides there. So the mayor mentioned Resolution 2024-1876. So at the conclusion of the survey, the council was presented with a resolution in February of 2024, which I was asked to review prior to it coming to the council, and I can tell you from a staff perspective, we have no objection to public comment, public comment periods, study sessions, however we can help inform the public. That's why when we, before we started the survey, we put up the website that is just for this project. There is no other website that is for a single project other than this one in the City of Prescott. We knew the importance of this project early on and the importance of public participation and public comment. So the gist of the resolution is that we hold two study sessions, and today is the second of those two study sessions, and that we hold two public hearings. And we'll have our first public hearing in the 3 o'clock voting session, as Sarah mentioned, and our second public hearing will be on September the 9th in the 3 o'clock voting session as well. So if there are people that you know that weren't able to make it today, they still have the opportunity to make comment on September the 9th, and they always have the opportunity to make comments on the sr89improvements.com website. Some of the other things in the resolution besides public transparency included, including an alternative to a five-lane road. They said, "We would like to see an alternative that does not include five lanes." So there is an alternative on the website and that we're asking council to consider that is not a five-lane option. They asked that we include a traffic report as part of the design concept report. There is a traffic study. It is currently posted on the sr89improvements.com website. They asked for a detailed financial analysis, and we are going to talk about at what phase of the project we actually get a detailed financial analysis. I'm just going to tell you, the short story is it's not at 15% design, but we fully intend to have a detailed financial analysis, no matter what alternative we choose. And then we were asked to follow the Exhibit 1 to the resolution, the process that we use for all of our capital improvement program processes. And when Tim Sherwood comes up in a minute, he's going to go through where we are in the process right now and where some of these additional steps are going to come in. So right now, I'm going to ask Tim Sherwood, our capital program manager, to come up to the podium, and he's going to present the next couple of slides. Are there any questions up to this point? Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Tim Sherwood, Capital Program Manager. So I just want to kind of give you an update on where we're at and how we got here. So as Gwen and the mayor have mentioned, Resolution 2024-1876 was passed on February 13th of 2025. At that point, staff, staff developed a, this is a process we do several times a year. We've currently, over the course of the summer, I believe I've done five or six requests for statement of qualifications. Part of that process is there's no fees associated with that. We're not allowed by ARS to take any fee, allowed to let them submit a price at that point. It's strictly a qualification-based process that ARS is very strict about, and we follow it to the letter of the law. So like I said, it's qualification solely. After, once the process starts, staff does a scoping report, which is a standard document for design. It kind of outlines the project, gives the consultants that are submitting their statement of qualifications a roadmap for putting their statement together. The SOQ was advertised the last week of March and the first week of April in 2024. We chose to advertise it statewide. Most of our projects that we advertise, we advertise in the Courier and on our website. We took this, we went to the Arizona Republic and went to every statewide option that we had because we wanted to get as much interest in this project as possible. A mandatory pre-proposal meeting was held in April, on April 16th. Mandatory meaning that if you want to participate in the process, you want to submit, you need to be at the meeting. Three firms attended that meeting, and all three firms submitted a statement of qualifications on May 2nd of 2024. During the process, staff selected a two-step qualification process. Again, per ARS regulations, you're allowed to do either a single step or a two-step. A single step is you choose your firm based off their SOQ solely. A two-step is you review the SOQs, and then you have the highest-ranked firms brought in for an interview, a presentation interview process. So then the combination of those two processes are what's used to select the highest-ranked firm. SOQ reviews were done in May and June of 2024. Presentation interviews were done at the end of July. Since we only had three firms and the scoring in the SOQs were fairly close, we invited all three firms to participate in the presentation process. The review panel for both the SOQ review and the presentation consisted of four registered engineers and one utility expert. Two of the members, two of the engineers were not City of Prescott employees. They were outside agency engineers. Kim Lee Horn was selected as the top-ranked firm and notified at the end of July. Kim Lee Horn is a national engineering firm with offices in 36 states, and they're licensed in 49 of them. Projects of this scope are typically designed by multiple firms. Kim Lee Horn is the lead for this, but they selected, as you can see on the slide, multiple firms to work with them. Lion Engineering and Waterworks are working on the effluent and wastewater engineering aspect of the project. Colin Nicholas are experts in rock removal, which will be required no matter what option is chosen, alternative is chosen by council due to the utilities. The rock that's on the side of the road is also underneath it. T2 Utility Engineers is a utility locating company. They locate utilities to the letter of CAD-level information. It's not just measuring down and poking a hole. They actually have information that can be plugged into a computer set of plans. Beta PR is the public relations firm associated with the project. They're the ones that are, help build the website and keep it up and running. They're also the public notification arm of the project. ETC, a local company, they are doing geotechnical engineering, and Willmang is doing the cost analysis as we go through the process. They will analyze our budgets and cost analysis as we move forward. Council awarded a 15% design, a DCR contract to Kim Lee Horn on November of 2024. So I want to talk about where we're at with the three.
Mayor Protem, can you tell me, I have a question.
Sorry about that, Tim, but I want to grab you before you go off that first slide. Oh, you already did. Okay. Just to point out for everybody there, this is going to be a collaborative effort among all of these. I know I've been approached by a few people, you know, concerned about our small, little Kim Lee Horn office here in Prescott and their experience breadth. And what I'm going to say is just basically add on to what you just said. So inside of the Corporation of Kim Lee Horn, this project will be sorted to people inside the corporation, could be statewide. It's not just local here. So they'll be tapping into the knowledge level of what I call the A-string, the people that have actually had a lot of experience, including all of these other companies here. So everybody will be collaborative. They'll come together, and that's going to produce a working set of blueprints, if you will, or a design, whatever you want to call it.
That's correct. And I would say there's a lot of firms we work with that have licenses in multiple states.
Right.
And often the work may be done outside of Arizona. It may be done by an office out of Texas or Utah or someplace else. It's just, it's where their staffing, their experts in the area they're working in are located.
So the ultimate engineer's stamp on the final set of working blueprints will come from Kim Lee Horn.
That is, that is correct.
As, okay, as a collaborative effort. Okay, thank you.
So going back to, I flipped one page too far. Sorry about that. So going back to where we're at, as the resolution identified, we need to come up with, we need to identify three alternatives for, for the corridor. So the highest-ranked alternative was Alternative 3B, which is a five-lane widening through the entire corridor. The budgetary estimate for that is $36.7 million. On the left, you'll see required safety improvements. That is common with all three alternatives I'm going to show you. So that includes a taper extension at the Fippen Roundabout that would lengthen the taper coming off, going southbound, a frontage road with an acceleration lane with a left end left out at the south end of the project near the Willow Lake Roundabout, where the businesses are on, I'm going to call it the east side of the road. The Willow Lake Roundabout southbound approach realignment. We will consolidate access points, improve sightlines, and then right-in, right-out only conditions throughout the corridor as necessary. And again, that is common with all the alternatives. The unique features of the five-lane widening through the entire corridor would be, as it says, five lanes through the corridor. Now, that doesn't mean five traffic lanes. That would be two travel lanes in each direction with a center turn lane for each direction. It would include a two-lane roundabout near the old SR-89 Loop Road, that old 89 intersection, a two-lane roundabout north of Twisted Trail, and then right-outs within 1,500 feet of the roundabouts. The second-ranked alternative, which was Alternative 5B, is a five-lane widening with four lanes plus a barrier through the narrow section to kind of narrow that down. The budgetary estimate for that is $35.5 million. Again, the required safety improvements on the left are common with all three alternatives. The unique features of this one would be the five-lane widening between Fippen Trail and Boulder Creek Lane, narrowing down to four lanes between Boulder Creek and Twisted Trail, which is everybody's referred to as the Narrows throughout the process, and then a five-lane widening again between Twisted Trail and Willow Lake Roundabout. So you'd see five lanes coming south from Fippen Trail till you get to the Narrows, four lanes with a barrier of some sort, and then widening back out to five lanes to Willow Lake. It would include a two-lane roundabout near Old SR-89 and a two-lane roundabout north of Twisted Trail, which is common with the 3B alternative, and then again, right-outs within 1,500 feet of the roundabouts. So as has been mentioned, we had to present a non-widening alternative, which is Alternative 2B, has a budgetary estimate of $25.2 million. It was the 10th-ranked alternative of the, all the different alternatives we looked at, so it was, but it was still the highest-ranked, non-widening alternative that we had. So again, all the required safety improvements, these are common with both Alternative 3B and 5B. It would just include the two lanes throughout the corridor with single-lane roundabouts near. near Old SR89 and a single-lane roundabout north of Twisted Trail. So the next thing I want to discuss with you is, how did the resolution influence our processes?
Excuse me, Tim. Councilman Grady had a question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. So, Tim, on the non-widening alternative, I'm concerned, there's a question in here, but I'm concerned that with that public survey that was originally done and with feedback that we've received during the comment period, it just doesn't seem like we put a lot of depth, or Kimley Horn put a lot of depth, into looking at Alternative 2B. I mean, it's in the scoping report, it's in the SOQ, and yet, I recall seeing something, I'll have to look at it here in a second, where specifically it called out traffic lights, flex lanes, acceleration lanes, turn lanes, pedestrian and bicycle traffic. In what ways did you fully assess the non-impactful widening alternative?
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, we had 20 alternatives total?
Yep.
So, Councilman Grady, we had 20 alternatives total. And some of those items you're talking about were part of the other alternatives, but this was the highest-ranking two-lane alternative. So non-widening alternative, this was the highest-ranking one. Other ones that included flex lanes or traffic lights or things like that ranked lower than this one in the two-lane widening. So that's why we're presenting this one to you today.
So I understand that, but again, given the community response that we've received, I guess I don't understand why we didn't see a fuller report on the non-widening alternative.
You want to address that?
Sure.
That kind of detailed some of those elements.
Andrew Baird, Kimley Horn, thank you for having me for the third time. So to address Alternative 2B, if you go to the website, first of all, we generated a full 15% concept plan for all three alternatives. 2B, the focus was on the required safety improvements. So if you go and look at those plans, that is where we focused on write-outs at certain intersections, line of sight. So recognizing that we kind of had, we had the two widening alternatives and then the non-widening alternative, but this one focused specifically on safety improvements. And so when we started to look at specifically south, the south section of the corridor, we included write-outs at key intersections, recognizing that you would, one of the main issues of this project was that you would have to be waiting 60 to 90 seconds to make a left turn out of certain intersections. So to promote still the movement of traffic while not making a non-safe movement and a left out of these intersections, we included write-outs. And then that's where the two single-lane roundabouts came about in terms of, let's give them an opportunity to turn around. So I think if you look a little closer into 2B, it certainly was vetted as a third alternative with detailed plans that are included on the website, as well as a cost estimate, just as much as 3B and 5B. But the focus was on the intersection improvements themselves and how we could kind of make those cross streets safely accessible to the corridor, recognizing that we weren't going to be widening the road. Now, as we look on there as well, like improved sightlines, that's every alternative. And this, as you pull up to an intersection, in some cases, we do have rock or vegetation in the way that needs removal so that we can actually have line of sight down the corridor. So again, not specifically corridor-wide improvements such as 5B and 3B, but Alternative 2B did have a considerable amount of thought into the intersection improvements.
May I continue, Mayor?
You're still up.
Thank you. So I don't see any mention of traffic lights or flex lanes. I do understand why it ended up number 10, but again, with the community input that this council was receiving, it just seems like it warranted more examination. So what about flex lanes and traffic lights? What?
I'll speak specific to flex lanes. I know Ian's going to be talking specific on signals and later portion of the presentation. Flex lanes were considered. So of the 20 alternatives, there was a flex lane option, and there was actually two. There was a flex lane option where we'd still require widening to make sure the flex lane was wide enough to accommodate traffic. And then there was one that would be, let's just basically take a two-way center left turn and convert that into a flex lane. What's the viability of that? And we vetted that through the technical committee, and that scored ultimately lower than the top-ranking alternative. So flex lane was a consideration. In fact, two flex lanes were part of two alternatives of the 20.
And traffic lights?
Ian's going to speak to traffic lights.
Ian Mattingly, Transportation Manager, City Traffic Engineer. So we were limited with the amount of alternatives we could analyze, and traffic signals specifically were not placed, for instance, on a, you know, leave the corridor in a two-lane configuration and then put traffic signals. The traffic study, however, did include an analysis within it that compared the existing roundabout operation at Willow Lake Road and Fippen Trail, where they would, basically those signals would be in a four-lane configuration because it's basically already wide there. And in those analyses, when we looked at that, the signals had doubled the delay, and they failed much sooner. I think from a staff perspective, we knew that if you tried to use traffic signals along the corridor in its existing condition, those would fail. And so there really wasn't any practical purpose to have that as standalone alternative because that, it's not going to work. So, but we do talk about traffic signals and their operation instead of roundabouts in the traffic study, and they were analyzed. But they were not in a standalone alternative. Yeah. Like I said, we did 20. I think if we had taken every single one, it would have gotten so many, and pretty much it was like, you could eliminate that immediately as being considered. And I'll talk more about traffic signals later. Hopefully, that'll answer some other questions. So I'll come back to where we're at. Like I said, this is kind of a hybrid of what our typical capital program process is. And so how did the resolution impact the schedule or impact our processes and also the public outreach? So you see the steps on the left-hand side. So our five-year capital improvement program is where we're identifying project needs. As Gwen said, that's through the water, wastewater model, streets analysis, et cetera. In program development, we're looking at funding, phasing. Are we looking at using an in-house design? Or are we going to use a consultant, as we have on this project? Scope of work is developed, as I mentioned previously. We review the age of the existing infrastructure, condition, maintenance records, and other issues. So anytime we look at a road, if we just want to do a paving project, we're going to look at the utilities. If we're looking at the utilities, we want to see what the condition of the road is. So we put everything back. We hopefully have something that's going to last us, as Gwen mentioned, 20 to 30 years. On this project, we chose to do a significant amount of public outreach. That's where we developed the project website and the survey. It's the first time in my 14 years of the city we've done this. I'm pretty sure it's pretty, the first time we've ever done it. So that's, that process has been in effect since June of '23, so a little over two years now. That's been available. So, and that process was started eight or nine months, even before the resolution was passed, back in February, the website and the survey were up and running. We go through the consultant selection process, which I detailed on the first slide I talked about, where we, our request for proposal ranking selection, and it wasn't a request for proposal this go-around, it was a request for statement of qualifications, as I said, and no fees were associated with that, with that submittal.
Excuse me, Tim. Councilwoman Furworth has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Piggybacking on where Mr. Grady was, you just brought up public comment, and that's the first time you've done this much on a project. But I think one of the things that I'm seeing or hearing from the public is that they've been talking, but the question is, has anyone been listening? And how has it been integrated into their concerns? And I think, you know, Councilman Grady was just doing a great job of articulating that the alternatives, the three lead alternatives, don't include some of that public comment. So I would like at some point today to get a better understanding of public comment and exactly how that's played into how we are where we are.
Okay. And I don't want to speak for Ian or Andrew. Like I said, we had 20 alternatives, and the 20 alternatives were developed based off the input we got from the public. Things like flex lanes, things like lights, traffic signals, et cetera, et cetera. We even had a concept of raising the road up. We had a section, a comment about having a double-decker road, where basically a bridge where traffic would go one direction, another traffic would go underneath it the other direction. We looked at every single comment that we got from the survey, and that's how we ended up with 20 alternatives. But between the Design Review Advisory Group and the Technical Committee, it was whittled down to the three that we're presenting to you now.
I think if we...
Did I not answer that?
You answered it, but I'm still not seeing, it was like, public comment was used to come up with, I mean, I remember the double-decker idea, and I was really glad to see you guys had evaluated the double-decker, and I knew it was going to be way too expensive. You know, we're not the city that has those kind of budgets. But other aspects of what the public wants to see, I would like to see, I guess, we're going to get there eventually. I would like to see how the public feels that they've been heard. And I'm not sensing that. So we're missing something here. That's why we keep getting public comments that is not happy with these alternatives. So I just want to, that's one of the things that we're struggling with. And the most recent survey that just came in from the last, you know, and I know Gwen, you've got that in your deck, so we're going to get there. But, you know, the substantial public backlash, as I do the math on these comments, is not really great. So, but in this stage, from what you're saying to me, you use the public to come up with the range of options, and then experts or your design group rule things out. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Mayor Pro-Tim can tell me?
Yes. Tim, thank you. You and I talked a while back, just sort of on the fly real quick, and we talked a little bit about this ranking number two. And if I, and this is going to lead into my next real quick comment, but you're, none of these plans here, we own all the property for that. Is that correct? Because we talked, we had a situation with eminent domain, but to do the maximum project, we own all that property. Is that correct?
We have 150-foot right-of-way through the entire corridor till you get just past the Box Culvert Bridge that's just south of Key Kefir. Then it narrows down to 100 feet. So there's plenty of right-of-way there. A roundabout at Twisted Trail may require some property acquisition on the east side of the road. It's a parcel with no development on it, no, but we're not impacting any homes or anything like that.
Okay. And then on the non-widening alternative, this one, if we were to choose this one, ranked number 10, we would not have to move or frack, or whatever you want to call it, any of the rocks to do this one, correct?
I can say we wouldn't have to do anything.
Okay.
There are current intersections in that corridor right now that have really bad sight, sightlines. And so there may be some vegetation, rock removal to improve that. As we said, there's going to be improvements that are going to be consistent with any alternative that council chooses. So like I said, and there may be some write-outs still as part of any alternative. But like I said, the fact that there's going to be any rocks removed to improve traffic safety, I can't say that's not going to be the case.
Okay, one last real quick thing. On this ranking number two, this would be the four lane, not the five lane. Do you, and I know it's probably a little early, but I think you've done a little preliminary work. Can you estimate if we were to do this number two, which is the four lanes, not the five, roughly, how many feet back would we have to move those rocks? 10 feet, 15 feet? And is it coming off equally both sides, or is it coming off one side?
I don't know the number off the top of my head. Andrew, do you have any? About 12 feet?
It's about 12 feet total?
Yeah.
To accommodate for four lanes?
Each side.
For each side, 12 feet each side to accommodate for four lanes? Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll go back to, we're at the stage where the resolution was passed, and what that entailed was the Design Concept Report Contract, 15% design plans, and the traffic report, as well as, I want to keep talking about a budgetary estimate at this level. At 15% level, we don't have a detailed cost analysis at that point, and I'll talk about that a little bit later. And then also for the resolution is the public comment period, which is the period we're in now. So that's the two areas in gray. And then, once that's done, then we kind of fall back into what our normal processes are, which is a design contract for finishing the rest of the design, getting from 15% to biddable plans, design development in regards to easement and acquisitions, more public meetings. We typically hold public meetings during the design process to keep the public informed, and preliminary construction documents. And then that's when the more of a detailed cost development, cost for the project is developed. And then at the construction, when we go to award the construction contract, we will have a final cost confirmed for the project, and it's when we advertise, bid, evaluate our bids, and come to council for award.
So at this point, I'm going to ask Carrie Oberheim to come up, our Operations Manager, and assist me with going through the comments that we've received in the current 60-day public comment period. We are not, we have not completed the 60-day public comment period. That will not end until September 9th. But per the resolution, we were asked to post on the website that I've mentioned a bunch of times, sr89improvements.com. On July 18th, we posted the first set of comments that we received after the first study session. And 10 days after this study session, we will post the public comments that we have received since July 18th. So if the public would like to see the comments or the council, they're welcome to go to the website to look at the public comments. It's not feasible for us to answer every single question that came in, but we tried to group them into themes of things that we were seeing more repeatedly through the comments. And so we're going to attempt to answer some of those questions to the best of our ability. So I'll just go ahead and get started, but I've asked Carrie to read the, what the comment we're going to talk about, and then myself or the other staff will answer those questions to the best of our ability. Carrie, you want to kick us off?
Thank you, Gwen. So, public comment theme was public involvement and transparency. Subject specifically, public opposition to widening is not reflected in the plans. The Design Ranking Advisory Group and the Pairwise method used was unclear, and there were questions about the process, including transparency and predetermined outcomes.
All right. So we kind of jumped ahead in our last conversation to the answer to this question. But I will say that in addition to the Alternative 2B ranking, as Tim mentioned, we did look at other alternatives that came out of the survey, as we mentioned, the flex lane, the signal lights, the double-stacked road, raising the road. Those were all alternatives that we looked at that were, in theory, non-widening. Not all of them actually were non-widening, but the public perceived them to be non-widening. We did bring forward Alternative 2B, which was the highest-ranked, non-widening alternative of the 20 alternatives that were developed. So we did attempt to meet that requirement through bringing the Alternative 2B forward. So there have been, there were quite a few comments, and I received emails about the public involvement, part of this, where we formed our Design Ranking Advisory Group. We did our best to represent the many different sectors of the community. You can see here on the screen. When we brought this concept to council, we put these different sectors up on the screen. And then we went out looking for folks that would volunteer to represent these different sectors. Now, I'll also tell you that with the exception of the one-county resident, not only did the people who participate represent these sectors, but they were also residents of the City of Prescott. We wanted to make sure that Prescott residents' voices were heard across the community, and so these are the sectors that were represented. We did use a technique called the Pairwise method. And for today's conversation, I thought it might be helpful. I looked it up, I Googled it. What does Pairwise, what's the Pairwise method? So I could give you an explanation of, we've tried to explain to you what it is, but let me just read it because I think it might help people understand what the process was. So the Pairwise method... process was. So the Pairwise method is a decision-making techniques where items are compared against each other in pairs to determine their relative ranking or importance, either by a decision-maker's subjective judgment or by analyzing quantitative data. So, in the case of this group, we were asking them to use their subjective judgment, or their personal values, if you will, to tell us which of these things were more important to them. The reason that, and it's been mentioned that the actual cost of the project was never mentioned to this group, and that's a true statement. We did not say it's $30 million, it's $36 million, because we weren't asking them if they were okay with how much it was going to cost. We were asking them, is the cost of this project, no matter what it is, more important to you than the safety of cars traveling on the road? Is the cost of this more important to you, or is the view shed that you can see from your car more important to you than what this costs? That's a value-based decision, not a data-driven decision. We weren't asking them to make data-driven decisions. We were asking them to tell us through their own judgment and their own values what was more important to them. Because throughout this process, my staff and I, we are data-driven. There is no doubt. An engineer's mind is data-driven. The consultant is data-driven. But the community is clearly telling us how they feel. Regardless of the data sometimes, their concerns are driven by how they feel. So this was our attempt, as a data-driven people, to interject some value-based decision-making into the ranking process. You can see from the outcome what was most important to the...
Excuse me, Gwen, but I have to comment on this.
I'm sorry, if I've offended anyone. It wasn't my intention to offend anyone, only to tell you...
Even though I graduated with a degree in biology, I had a minor in psychobiology. So I studied a lot of psychology, and one of those classes was a class called Psychometry. Psychometry is the method of studying test methodology, and how testing results can be directed in one way or another. So I remember this Pairwise being discussed by my professor. And he was saying, what would you rather have? A pound of solid gold or a puppy? So if you picked a pound of solid gold, then you'd be claimed that you didn't like pets. So those kinds of Pairwise distinctions can be quite deceptive unless they're very, very well crafted. So I think some of the questions that I looked at in this study kind of followed, fell into that concerning category. And I think being able to say, well, is the sightline or the environmental consequences of this decision more important than how much it costs, and it's going to cost $100 million? Those things can push you in one direction on how you answer that. So I think costs are very important to be considered when you're comparing them to other issues. Please proceed.
Okay. Fair enough. So these were the, this was the outcome of the Pairwise ranking exercise that we did with our 15-person group. I can also tell you that the Technical Advisory Committee, their rankings were weighted based on this outcome. Their rankings were influenced by this weighted ranking that happened through the advisory group. There were four professional engineers on the Technical Advisory Committee and one wastewater expert from our operations So we were asked about transparency in the questions. Again, our website, from day one, this is where all information that we have collected, any information we have to share, has been posted here on this website. Beta PR has been great about putting out what they call e-news blurbs. So if you've registered on this website and any new information is added to this website, you would automatically get a notification that there was new information to see on this website.
Okay. So our next public comment theme was Environmental and Utilities. Repeated breaks in the effluent line under SR89 raised questions about water contaminations. And we also had many commenters who support the utilities portion of the upgrades.
Okay. So, as I mentioned early on, the existing effluent pipe has broken about 10 times in five years, and we've had eight breaks in the last two years, actually, two and a half years now. The effluent that's released in those breaks is treated wastewater. It is not raw sewage. And we use effluent pretty regularly in our community for construction purposes, and it's also used on golf courses. So if you golf on the city's golf course or Prescott Lake's golf course, Hasiyampa also uses treated effluent on their golf course, but they treat their own. It's pretty common use of that water. Anytime we have a main break, whether it's sewer, water, or effluent, we report it to ADEQ as part of the city's permit. So we do have an obligation to report breaks and water losses. But the city does not regulate private wells in any way. So we highly encourage any well owner to test their wells regularly, but we do not regulate private wells here. Next question.
So this public comment theme is Property Impacts. We heard that Calvary Lane is a private road. Property owners have concerns of losing land or private buffers, privacy buffers due to the expansion, and questions of who could be affected by land acquisition.
All right. So here on the right is a diagram of SR89. You can see that the right-of-way is 150 feet in width, near Calvary Lane and Granadell's Road. The intersections of those roadways are in the city's public right-of-way, but the roads themselves are private. So it is true, Calvary Lane is a private road, but the intersection is, where it intersects with Highway 89 is maintained by the city. The travel lanes and the existing roundabouts today are all in the existing right-of-way. Any rocks that we might take out would be in the existing right-of-way. There would be no rock removal on private property, only within the existing right-of-way. And as Tim mentioned, approximately 12 feet on each side for the four-lane configuration. I think Councilman Moore is trying to speak.
Councilwoman Moore.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, just a follow-up question on the Calvary Lane. Whose responsibility is it to maintain Calvary Lane, then? The property owners on either side?
It's a private road, so the property owners.
Okay. But East Granadell's Road is not a...
That's a county road.
County road.
So you have a high county maintains that road.
Thank you.
So, the question was asked earlier, would we need any additional land for this project? We are only at 15% design. So, at this point, we think that we may need some additional land for the roundabouts, but we don't know that definitively yet. We're very, very early in the discovery process and the design process. If we do need additional land, it would be purchased, not condemned, or any of these other terms that I have been hearing. That's not our intention at all. In fact, we've moved the location of the roundabouts from our very, very early conversations away from homes and businesses so that they're not near those types of uses to have impacts for those folks. But again, we are only at 15%. There's still a lot of work to do. If we were to build a roundabout, we would have to look at the design, what we can fit within the existing right-of-way, determine if we even need additional land or not. We may not. We have a lot more work to do before we can definitively answer that question.
Public comment theme, Alternative Solutions. It was suggested that we could widen Willow Creek Road, add a SunDog connector, and widen 69, because they're both seen as better alternatives, and suggested improvements for ride-ins and ride-outs and turn lanes.
Okay. So Willow Creek Road cannot be widened further. It's currently a two-lane-in-each-direction configuration. There are some center turn lanes, depending on where you are along the roadway. But it cannot be widened without disturbing or displacing many homes and businesses. That would be a much larger undertaking than even this one. SR89, or SR69 is currently being widened to six lanes. Right now, if you go out on 69, it's all tore up. It's because they're widening it to six lanes to accommodate larger traffic volumes. Also, this is an east-west roadway. It's not going to have significant impacts on this corridor of, this portion of SR89 traffic conditions. If we use roundabouts as some of the alternatives, we have the opportunity to control access points. We know that, and Ian's going to go into this in a few minutes, but we know that traffic entering, the traffic flow, is what changes the level of service of a roadway. When traffic is moving, it's consistently moving, it's those interruptions when new traffic is introduced from the side streets that causes those interruptions in traffic where people are now tapping their brakes or having those stops or things like that. So, the consultant has suggested that we use ride-out onlys within 1,500 feet of a roundabout, and that people that can then use the roundabout, or the closest roundabout to turn back and go the other direction if that's their desire. 1,500 feet, my understanding, is the standard for that type of traffic movement. Okay.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, where, in a reasonable drive, can I go experience four roundabouts within two and a half miles, that I would drive it and experience it? Because I can't imagine it, so I'd really like to experience it before we buy it.
High 17 to Cottonwood.
Yeah, Cottonwood and Sedona, 179.
Experience that, and...
Oh, well, I have experienced that, then.
You have?
Ooh.
And I'm not sure, but I think if you go over Mingus Mountain and try to come in, that's where all the roundabout, roundabout, roundabout. Yeah. Yeah. And I want you to notice when you do it, how slow you go, because you know a roundabout's coming, another roundabout is coming, that you, so speed will reduce, because you know another roundabout is coming. So, tell me after you've done it.
Done?
Okay.
I'm going to kill everybody else around this corner.
Oh, no. Okay. All right. All right, let's go to the next one.
Public comment theme on Growth and Urbanization. Limited groundwater makes further expansion unsustainable. As Prescott develops north of the Dells, traffic may shift away from SR89, reducing future demand, and there was doubt in the projected 2.75 growth rate.
Okay. So this conversation really is not about water, but to answer the question, since it was brought up several times, I just want to affirm for council that any developments that have been approved by this council or previous councils have been accounted for in the city's water portfolio. That water has been set aside for those developments. Again, not necessarily by this council. It may have been by previous councils. I also want to make sure that we all have an understanding that this particular project, neither the wastewater nor the road, what we're deciding to do with the road, it's not influenced by any development agreement. It's not included in any development agreement. It's not the obligation of any developer. I just want to be clear that this project, as I mentioned earlier, came about as a result of long-range planning needs for the region with Simpo for the roadway and the wastewater pipe through the water and wastewater modeling. And we're going to get into a bunch of traffic things now, so I asked Ian Mattingly to come up to the podium. He's our city traffic engineer. And he and I together are going to go through some of these aspects about traffic and the roadway.
Yeah, thanks, Gwen. And feel free to jump in anytime.
Yep.
So, with these next couple slides, we're trying to answer the question. So, one of the comments that was made, or comments that are made, is that as Prescott develops north of the Dells, traffic's going to shift. And so there's this thought that perhaps our growth rates and then just the traffic volumes that we're seeing continually grow, and we're projecting to grow into the future, us and others, will be changed substantially. And so, we just want to talk about some of the things that, why that likely isn't the case. So, as we current, we know that about 22,000 vehicles per day are using the roadway. And from Kimley Horn's Origin and Destination Study that was done with the traffic study, we learned that 46% of those vehicles driving through there, they're going to work. They're commuters. But 54% are not. And interestingly as well, the purposes of those trips, 76% of the trips going through 89 are non-commuter trips, such as shopping, going to the doctor, dining, entertainment, other things. And new developments, which were talked about, there's quite a bit of already, there's agreements in place and basically homes that are committed to be built, 15,000, over 15,500, in fact. And those were done by other councils. But we have about 1,700 of those homes currently built. And so that's, we're saying that's about 10%. A little more than 10% are built, but that means that we've got 90% more to be built in North Prescott. And while there will be commercial elements, and there should be commercial elements, those elements will not replace the need for people who are driving, either the ones that live up there or the ones that are coming from much further away. And the origin destination studies said that as well. It indicated that we have a lot of trips in the 10 to 30-mile range, people coming from, you know, areas of the county, North Chino, et cetera. But they will continue to come downtown and into the south end of town where we have the, we have YRM-C. We have the whole shopping corridor of Costco, Trader Joe's, the mall, all the things that are entailed in that, Lowe's, Home Depot. You've got tourism and downtown draws for the business district. So, while we will, we encourage some commercial up there to help pull some of this, the comment that that's really our solution, that's just not really the case. And so, all the studies that Gwen has mentioned through Simpo, doing this regional planning, you know, they look at planning of all the different communities and the draws of origin and destination. We're still going to have a draw through 89. And so, that's kind of the answer to that question. We know that this also isn't just a Prescott thing. We've got Williamson Valley, as I've said, it's a regional issue and it's a regional road. It's not a local road, so we need to plan accordingly. That's what you're seeing in the study results, and that's why some of the things regarding how much roadway capacity do we need continues to be stated. And that's just some data. Next slide. The other question really comes down to a question by the public as to the 2.75 regional growth. And we highlighted at the top, you know, people are seeing, hey, our growth rate is much lower than that, so why is, why are we projecting rates such, so much higher in the traffic end? And really, that comes down to, there is no one-to-one relationship between adding people and traffic growth on the roadway. And it's easy to think about this, if you think, if I'm one person in a home, I don't drive one time a day. I have multiple trips a day. And I also get drawn to certain places by the development that's in the area, changes in planning, changes in my schedule, all those types of things. So we just wanted to highlight the fact that 1% growth is not 1% traffic growth. Beyond that, though, why are we using 2.75%? So, basically, Kimley Horn looked at a whole bunch of data between 2011 and '22. And there were various growth rates pulled from various studies. ADOT did some studies where they did 10-year growth rates that were around 3.6%. There was a historic five-year growth rate that was being tracked before 2020 that was 3.65. And of those growth rates that we were tracking and that Kimley Horn assembled, 2.75 was the most conservative and lowest growth rate that we saw. So when we use the 2.75 and it was chosen, that is actually the lowest rate that we saw using this historic data that was gathered. And so, we feel like it's a conservative, accurate rate that is used to grow the traffic. Another thing about that is that, as we see these growth rates, they'll change through the Simpo studies on every five years when we do this. You'll see them grow, and you'll see them shrink. And we had rates in the four and a half to five at some point. Then we, five years later, we took some counts, and we readjusted those. But over the long run, we've held to numbers at least this high.
Yeah, I think the point is that population growth is not equivalent to traffic growth.
Absolutely.
they're second-home dwellers that don't show up in a, in a population or a census study, but nevertheless, they're here and they use our roadways and they contribute to the traffic demand.
Sure. Yeah, and one other thing about just the commercial draw of the specialness of the south of Prescott and the continued commercial draw, we may draw other home, you know, home stores and things up there, but you're never going to replace what South Prescott pulls. And so, that part of it is always going to be there along with all the other things you said. So, those were the comments on that, and then I think we'll move to the next section unless there are questions.
Public comment theme, traffic study and engineering standards. The number of days traffic data was collected, the amount of traffic simulations used for modeling, and forecasting traffic 25 years ahead is seen as unrealistic.
Yeah, so, it's a lot on this slide, but we're going to try to talk through it in a way that can be understand, understood. So, the traffic study that was conducted did have counts completed, and we showed them that they were done in January 25th and May of '23. A lot of times what happens is when we have a traffic study, a development comes in, they'll look to see what data is available. And if you have sufficient data that you don't have to go and do all this in-the-field traffic counts, you'll use that data. We did include some counts, and Kimley Horn did physical counts, but they used multiple independent sources to make sure that we had enough data so that we could be confident in these numbers. They included ADOT's annual average daily traffic counts from their website, they included the city's origin/destination model, which closely aligned with ADOT data. We used some permanent count station information we had from ADOT along 89. We used our own city annual traffic count program historic data, and we used numbers that were generated from existing volumes and proposed volumes because some of the studies were prior to these years from the SIMPO studies. So, we had a myriad of data to draw from, and so, you know, I understand the comment comes, hey, you only counted for a limited time, and that seems very, that seems very limited. But we had a lot of data, they had a lot of data, and it was validated. And then, as we went through the public process, we would have counts, we would present them to the public, we also got opportunities to see real-life counts as we had pipe breaks, and so, Kimley Horn would come out and do some video footage or count during that time. So, the data was extremely similar and it was very consistent, and so, I want to reassure everyone, at least on the council, that that data is good and it's got lots of ways that we validated it. As to the question about modeling, there was a model performed by Kimley Horn to simulate runs through the corridor. There were 10 simulated runs, and they were done in the AM and PM, so that's equivalent to 20 model runs, and they did that five times. There was over 100 VSIM simulation runs done on this.
Excuse me, Ian, but Councilman Grady had a question.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Ian, back to your earlier comment regarding traffic counts.
Sure.
I guess I am concerned that the statement of qualifications called for four one-week periods, and why with a 30-plus million-dollar project and a million-dollar design engineering contract, why did we accept one day in January of 2025?
Yeah, so, I might not be able to speak to that specifically, but I certainly would think that as we write these scopes in traffic studies and portions of that, we do refine the scope along the way, and if we see areas where data is already available, we can modify those requirements. And that's, that's the prob, that's the only answer I can give you because that's what happened. We had enough data available that we didn't have to go through those steps.
Could you tell me more about your last comments? I didn't fully understand it, but that there are annual city traffic counts, can you tell me more about that?
Yeah, so, the city, we budget money in our, typically every year, and we hire a consultant either to do hard counts on the ground with hoses, and we have done some that are electronic, but we do annual traffic counts, we try to do those each year. We just recently did our 2025, and so, we place counters at like 90, they rotate year to year, but about every two years, we hit every location. And so, then we use those, we post those on the website so that developers and maybe business people can know how much roadway traffic's on it, and then we submit those to ADOT as well.
What does that mean? We did, we do it, you said every location or I don't under?
Yeah, we have select locations. I think there's something like 150 locations within the city, so it might be certain segments of Willow Creek all the way up. Most of our major roadways, the arterials and collectors, we have that data for. And then, we do submit that through SIMPO to the ADOT website as well because they like to gather their own data plus our data, and they keep it on a, on a, on a website available for the public and used by consultants and others. Yeah. So, back to the modeling, they did over 100 simulation runs. They also, we have done, each SIMPO traffic RTP, the Regional Transportation Plan, includes a model and model runs, including this roadway. So, with this and those, we have many more than 100 simulation runs done on this corridor by at least three different traffic specialist engineering firms, Jacobs, AECOM, and Kimley Horn. They've done those plans as well where they run a regional model to project these numbers, and that was obviously checked against these. And furthermore, as you've seen, I think Kimley Horn's come here and presented some 3D simulations at some of these public meetings. They modeled some projections, and then they did drone footage where they tried, they matched those up to current conditions, and that's kind of a check on the model as well. So, we didn't do one simulation run, there was many simulation runs done by them and certainly verified by many other methods. That's what I had on that. Any questions?
Mayor Protem, can you tell me?
Yes.
Yeah, Ian, I know I asked the same question last time we, after we saw those simulations. And I, the question was basically, did we, or can we do a simulation with fire, fire trucks trying to get through there, and will that come? I mean, is that going to be part of it?
So, we were, we have been working with Kimley Horn on doing some of those simulation runs, and so, that would be something that would be available at some point.
And we will have that, we will have that Mayor Protem coming. We, we began the work on that, but we haven't finished it yet.
Yeah, I'm concerned about that because that's
Yep.
a very large part of my consideration on this project is that item exactly. Thank you.
Yeah, and before I do leave this slide, I had one thing, I think I missed it, but basically, there was a question regarding, you know, why do we look out so far, 2050? But the bottom bullet basically tells us that, and it's common practice to use 25-years planning window, and the regional transportation plans done by SIMPO are federal requirements for the region to do that. So, this is in line with industry standards regarding long-range planning on transportation.
Public comment theme regarding traffic flow and safety. Many users of SR 89 report experiencing congestion, while many users of SR 89 report not experiencing congestion. Thank you for the giggles. Suggestions were made for the addition of merge lanes and turn lanes, and concern about adding lanes may encourage speeding and reduce safety, not improve it.
Another level of service slide. So, obviously, we're trying to answer those questions specifically related to varying experiences on the roadway and questions regarding just the general need for this. But if you use the roadway at various times, you're going to see the very, you know, different things. You know, a lot of what we talk about with level of service is based on the peak hour conditions, the worst-case conditions. But I do want to go over this a little bit, and then we'll just retouch on some of the levels of service that we're going to see and what that really means for people. But level of service is an engineer's way of describing how a roadway is performing. This is the more technical definition, and you've all heard it already, so I'm sorry if I, this is repeating, but it, it accounts for factors like speed, travel time, ease of maneuvering, delay, and overall safety. It's measured on a scale, a grading scale, from A to F. We've modified this because we basically in the daytime are operating from actually level of service C now, and we'll move towards an F. So, we did that for ease of understanding. But in everyday terms, what a C is, and we have C conditions kind of off-peak out there right now and up to A in the middle of the night, but Cs would mean that you have a steady flow of traffic, you have some minor delays, most drivers can maintain a consistent speed, and there's little stop-and-go movement. Now, we have a D and E from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., kind of in the peak period, slight fluctuation in the middle where we go to maybe a D, but mostly D and E. And that would be slowdowns, longer waits on the side street for intersecting cars, frequent stops, and that's what we're currently seeing today. If we go to an F, most of us know what that means, that's stop-and-go traffic, long delays at intersections or side streets, in this case, the corridor side streets, it's very hard to get out, and then very low travel speeds. That's the kind of traffic that leads to frustration and risky behavior. So, we know that we're headed towards these things, and again, our recommendations aren't really for the conditions on the road today. The recommendations that we're making, and the reason why certain alternatives are better for the long range is because we're addressing the future levels of service and what they will be, which the future out there, if you do not widen, is, is a level of service F. We have failure projected for 2034 for the roadway, and then the roundabouts themselves will begin to fail around 34 and 38, depending on the location. And I just make sure there's no questions. Next slide.
Councilwoman Ferworth.
Thank you, Mayor. So, we heard a lot at the last session, a lot of comments, concerns, even in the modeling that we saw, was, was the problems at the Willow Lake roundabout. And then, we asked later on in the presentation, you know, is this in scope? And it was like, no, the scope is not including those roundabouts out now, but this work has shown to you that the roundabouts will need to be addressed. And then, later that day, we authorized paving the Willow Lake roundabout. And again, I asked, why are we paving a roundabout? We might tire apart, and it was told, well, we have to because it'll protect the road until such time as we have a project and a plan. But I wonder as a system, and I'm sorry, my background isn't biology, it is supply chain management, and I just, as a system, I'm not understanding why we're not including the roundabouts. I definitely want to see the Willow Lake, now that I'm seeing you saying that Pippin's going to fail by 2038. Why are we not considering this whole roadway as a system and including the roundabouts in our work and our studies? And I fear that we're not going to have a good answer without including the whole system. So, that's my question.
So, in the, the DCR, you know, we're, we're coming into, it's not even finalized yet, but we're coming into 15%. In the traffic study, that's part of that, they basically are focusing on the roadway improvements and looking at the operation of the intersections at both ends, and they do have issues, and it's identified in there that at certain points in the future, we need to start as a city looking at spending some money to maybe improve those roundabouts. They will operate acceptably for quite a while, and the changes and the modifications that are going to be needed are not as impactful as deciding whether or not to do a two-lane widening today or a four-lane widening today. Because some of these things are probably slip lanes from one direction to another, like Willow Lake coming into the roundabout, you might need a slip lane to go north, south, and you might need one north. Those things are being treated more as spot improvements that we can do when it's appropriate sometime in the future, and you can correct me if I'm wrong. But that's what the traffic study is recommending. So, for us to add that in right now and then maybe have to, you know, approach some properties for some, you know, some, some areas that we need when that's, that can be fixed as smaller project at a later time, that's not really, that's not the recommendation. I know it seems kind of counterintuitive, but it's not the same impact as whether you decide now whether to do the two or the four on the lanes. You really need that sooner than you do these intersection improvements. That's, that's my answer. I don't know if that's good enough, but that is my answer.
And I would add that, that now that this study has identified that, we will include it in the five-year or 10-years appropriate capital so that we can be monitoring that particular condition at those roundabouts so that when they start to get close to failure, we can begin the design and changes that are needed there. But we're, we're probably eight to 12 years, based on these projections of 2034 to 2038, before the roundabouts will see failure condition. So, no, they're, they were not included in this because this is something that came out of the traffic study, it was not something we were anticipating going into the questions that were originally asked for this project.
Yeah, and they're also big enough, they're already built as two-lane roundabouts. You know, the widening is into those roundabouts occurs just north of the one at Willow Lake, so they're already compatible with the four or five-lane widening, except for some of the safety improvements like chicaning into it. But they're, they're already ready to accept the widening of the roadway, and so, we can phase those later, as Gwen said, and just watch those.
Councilman Grady has a question.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Actually, a couple of questions. Number one, you know, building off of Councilwoman Ferworth's point, I thought I recall from the Kimley Horn presentation that one other option with respect to the Willow Lake roundabout was also like a direct lane that would just go, probably require property acquisition, but a direct lane that would go and hit, and into Willow Lake Road specifically, and that might reduce traffic. I'm just wondering, in a model that's less impactful on a scenic and historic roadway, why wouldn't we take another look at that?
Yeah, so, so what you're saying is you think you saw something like a slip lane or some kind of additional thing added?
I think it came up in the, in the
Yeah, I think, I think there are some recommendations that are at least, you know, conceptually called out, and when we should look at those. I guess I'm lost on what the question is, though.
If that would enhance the value of a non-widening to make those improvements at the Willow Lake and 89 roundabout.
Yeah.
I hear you saying no, but I'm coming out of
No, the answer is, the answer really is no. The issue with the widening or the non-widening, you know, we have backups at the roundabouts, and if you look at the traffic study, the backups that occur in certain directions on the two-end roundabouts are still going to be in place whether we widen or we don't widen. But the capacity of the roadway in between is really the issue for the decision whether we widen, because it's the segment roadway level of service, you know, cars driving down the corridor, which is really driving some of the levels of service. So, when I say level of service F, we're mainly talking about the roadway level of service. Driving through the corridor is going to get worse and worse and slower and slower. You still have impacts from the, from the roundabouts at the end, and so, they're saying like, hey, at some point in the future, that will become a thing, even if you widen to four lanes, you're going to get some impacts from there, and maybe they'll even be worse. But that's, if we had analyzed that with the two-lane, it's not going to solve the segment problem of the non-widening. I'm not trying to be confusing.
No, I understand.
Yeah, that's why we didn't do that.
So, I have a, kind of on a personal note, I live off of Willow Creek Road, and I'm curious what its rating is currently.
Willow Creek Road?
Uh huh.
Yeah, Willow Creek Road is a C, and sometimes it hits like a D, somewhere in that range.
Yeah, D to F, okay, thank you.
Yeah. And you, you know, we saw when the closure happened, how we, we jumped it up, I think, into the 36,000-car range, and we saw those delays go way up. Those weren't related to intersections, that was more, almost overcapacity of just the roadway in general, and then there's impacts from things like Willow Lake, but that's one of the reasons why we talked earlier, you know, one of the solutions is, hey, just, we could push traffic or move it, and there's, Willow Creek has challenges on its own. What we're finding in the SIMPO, in these regional transportation plans, is that we need capacity on all our north-south lay. We can't just say, don't do it here and move them over here. We're going to grow so much, maybe with regional traffic, that we need, we have to do that everywhere, you know, based on data. This is just data decisions.
Ian, back on that roundabout before we move on. So, you're saying that the roundabouts will be addressed at a later date as a roundabout individually, not necessarily tied into this project?
Yeah, the, the ones on the end are, the recommendation of the report is that at some point in the future, the roundabouts themselves will begin to have some
individually, not necessarily tied into this project?
Yeah, the ones on the end are, the recommendation of the report is that at some point in the future, the roundabouts themselves will begin to have some capacity issues based on like Willow Lake Road traffic coming in, and at Pippin, Pippin, and the increases on there. And they're saying, hey, at certain points in the future, like 2034 and 38, you're going to need to start looking at spot improvements to the roundabouts, including things like slip lanes, I think they mentioned, maybe metering and some other innovative things.
Is a slip lane a dedicated, so for example, we're at the roundabout at Watson Lake.
Yes.
Is a slip lane, what you're referring to a slip lane, is that a dedicated right-hand turn if you were coming from the north to go to Willow Creek?
Yeah, so let's say, any direction you want to go on, you basically get to enter that lane prior to going into the roundabout itself, and just make that free right movement. You've seen intersection signalized ones with this. You just bypass that traffic, so you take it out, and that helps the capacity of the intersection, makes it work better.
Yeah, I totally see where that would work on that particular roundabout, I mean, immediately.
Yeah.
Thanks.
This slide attempts to address the comments about adding lanes, may encourage, yeah. This basically, the comment was that if you widen the roadway, aren't you going to increase speeds and things like that, some negative effects of doing that? And what we like to think about is that right now, we're starting to go where we can't keep speeds at speed limits at certain times of day, and that's what's going to continue to happen. Speed limits are going to come, speeds are going to get slower and slower, not in a good way, because they're going to be from congestion. As additional lanes are added, yes, drivers are generally able to maintain speeds more near the posted speed limit. That means smoother traffic flow, drivers don't have to slow down due to congestion, et cetera. The roundabouts being used within the corridor and at the ends of the corridor have the added benefit of naturally encouraging slower, more consistent speeds throughout the entire corridor. I know some people don't like them, some are here and some are others, but drivers have to slow down to navigate the intersections, and so they help to stabilize those speeds and keep them near the posted speed limit, and then lower at the intersections. Adding lanes also reduces aggressive driving behaviors, or it can. With more lanes, there's less need for drivers to jockey for position or change lanes, weave through traffic. At the merge points, currently, if you have a merge point at both ends of the roundabout, a lot of people have, we've seen crashes related to this, but they'll race. They might want to get by one person before they go into the two-lane section, so they'll actually try to change lanes to race by. If we widen, that's an added benefit that's safety-related. Now, all this is to say that you can, you know, if you have more open lanes and a wider roadway, you can have higher speeds. But speed is a behavioral choice. We have things that we can do to do that, to control that, such as enforcement, the roundabouts, other factors. We also, whatever speed we set as a city, if the widening was to move forward, we can reevaluate that, we can modify the existing, we don't have to stay with the existing 45-mile-an-hour speed limit, there's flexibility in what we do within that corridor, and if we see issues come up, we address those through reductions, other engineering, and things like that. So, that's my response to that, those questions.
Public comment theme, roundabouts and signalized intersections. Why roundabouts and not signalized intersections? Data does not show a high number of accidents, and the data does not indicate significant safety concerns. And people in Prescott don't know how to drive in roundabouts.
We, staff did not put that in there. That's a comment from the public.
Correct vote from comments.
We made no determination about people's abilities. So, I'm just going to go over a couple things about roundabouts and why they're good, and I'm going to try to address some of the issues regarding what we'll call smart lights, and just maybe some more stuff on signals. But roundabouts have been identified from information from the United States Department of Transportation and the Federal Highway Administration. They provide several benefits, we've already talked about some of these, but they are a proven countermeasure that significantly reduces crashes resulting in injury, serious injury, and death. In a minute, I am going to walk us through just some samples of our roundabouts to some other comparison signals, and it's basically, it's related to injury crashes. But there are safety implications when you use a roundabout, and they are good. They, one of the goals of council, one, a strategic goal of council, is to reduce injury, serious injury, and fatal crashes in the city. So this, the use of them aligns with that, in that the crash modification factors help that, and they are proven to do that. They do that through lower, you know, operating speed, reduced decision points within the intersection, and the traffic calming effect that they have. They also improve operational performance. When you look at a roundabout intersection in comparison to an equivalent signalized intersection, they just move more traffic. In the traffic study, which I referenced earlier, they did do an analysis to see if you just took out the roundabouts at the ends and you put in signals, what would be the difference? And I think it basically stated, if you look at existing conditions, they operate pretty much similar. But as we grow traffic through the corridor, in the future, they're going to be, they're going to have like twice the delay. So they're, while the roundabouts have some issues too, that we've talked about addressing, the signals will fail and have like double the delay. One of the reasons that we didn't, and we know that as traffic engineers and others, and, you know, this location, if you've been here long enough, you remember that ADOT owned this roadway, and they had a signal at Willow Lake Road. They took it out like about 20 years ago. But the volumes of traffic were much lower then, and at that time, backups through the Dells were even, they were worse than they are today at a four-lane roundabout with much higher traffic. If you introduce signalized intersections within this corridor to provide access for residents, and you do not do a widening, one car in the morning will back traffic up. And, I mean, you know, we didn't do the analysis because we didn't feel like we needed to go through that process, but it will not be a solution. When I hear the term, and I've heard the term "smart light," so I'm just going to define what we think that means. What I think that means is a traffic signal that reacts adaptively to traffic as it comes up, and so it's not a quote "dumb" light. What we call that is a, it's a fully actualized, it uses detection, but all our signals in Prescott do that. But we have considered those things. We've analyzed them as a comparison to the existing conditions, and they do not work as well. And if you place them within the corridor instead of these like proposed roundabouts at Twisted Trail and at there, the failure of the roadway will occur much sooner, and we'll have a lot more backups. So, that's why roundabouts are better. In regards to the safety factor, the fact that some people think we don't have a lot of crashes, I guess that's subjective, as to what you think is an acceptable number of crashes in a corridor. But anytime staff or their consultants can add traffic control devices that serve the purpose of giving access and then make it safer, that's the choice that we want to make.
Excuse me, and Councilwoman Furworth has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question based upon where we might go down the road in an hour or whatever, or in September, actually. How much is it to install an actualized traffic signal? Is that what your term was?
Yeah.
How much does that cost to install one or two?
We'll say a four-lane intersection with a fully, yeah, eight-phase traffic signal with detection and all the things, $400,000, something in that range.
Thank you.
For each?
For each.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Through a contractor, yeah. So, we do, we do want to pick the device that provides all these features, and if it has safety benefits, that's positive. So, we looked into, you know, what's going on, we can see these national numbers, but what's actually happening when we look at our roundabouts that we have in comparison to some signalized intersections that have similar traffic? And what we found is that in Prescott, when you look at injury crashes, you are 424% greater chance of having an injury crash within a comparison signalized intersection than in a roundabout. And so, if you go to the next slide, maybe we can keep back and forth, how we did this was, we looked at the two on our, we looked at the four intersections on our corridor, 89. The first two, we say they're high-volume intersections or roundabouts, and that's, it's hard to see, but on the left side, you'll see the diagram up at the top, there's number six. That's the roundabout at 89 and Deepwell Ranch slash Willow Creek. Yeah, and it's up at the top there on the diagram, and go on up. That's technically owned by ADOT, but it's, but for all intents and purposes, it has our roadway goes into it. Then the other one was 89 and Willow Lake Road, which we know. So they, they're high-volume intersections because the street that comes into them has a lot of side street traffic, Willow Lake and Deepwell, Willow Creek. And what we found is that those two intersections had an injury rate. So if you're in a crash, there's a 2% chance that that crash will result in an injury at Willow Lake, and there's a 9% chance that your crash will result in injury at Deepwell. When we compared that to equivalent signalized intersections, we chose five. They are random, we didn't look at the crash data before, but what we did is we tried to pick intersections that had similar roadway volume on the main line, and then some kind of high volume on the side street. But we chose five, and then you see the numbers, but we averaged between 16 and 34. The point is that these roundabouts handle a lot of traffic, similar to these signalized intersections, and the likelihood of you having an injury crash when you get in a crash are much lower. You can see that...
Excuse me, and Councilmember Gamboge had a question.
Having driven traffic circles or roundabouts in London, and Mumbai, and Kuala Lumpur, and Singapore, I was against traffic circles too, but then one time I was sitting with former county supervisor Jack Smith, who once said that at roundabouts, you get fender benders, and at traffic intersections or traffic lights, you get T-bones, and I think your data bears that out.
Yeah. Yeah, and you can see that we have a substantial amount of crashes going on at all these intersections, but when you look at, and you can go to the next slide, when you look at the total crashes at our roundabouts, we have four, over the five-year period, the average across all the roundabouts was 10 crashes per year, and the injury rates were between 0 and 10% for any of those crashes. This is the low-volume intersections, so we took 89 and Pippin, and 89 and Perkins there by the golf course. We consider those more low-volume roundabouts, that we might see volume similar if we introduce a roundabout at the old 89 loop, something like that. So we wanted to have a feel for what happens at roundabouts that have a little lower side street volumes. And then if you can go back to my very first roundabout slide, two back. And the, you know, we're saying that on average, 8 million vehicles per year use these roundabouts, but that's just the main line traffic, there's obviously a lot of traffic coming in from the side streets. So, a lot of people and users are going through these roundabouts, and they're handling it very well, and they're keeping people safe. That's my final point on why roundabouts. With that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer that, and I don't, I think that was it.
Thank you, Ian.
Answer any questions.
Public comment theme, cost and fiscal responsibility. Residents question the $37 to $40 million cost for the project. Some suggest cost sharing with neighboring communities due to the regional impact, and why isn't there a detailed cost estimate?
Okay, so as we've mentioned a couple of times, we have the three alternatives that range from 36.7 million to $25.2 million. So how have we budgeted, and how are we going to pay for any one of these alternatives? So as I mentioned previously, the city collects development impact fees for new growth, but we have to remember that impact fees can only be used for upsizing or new infrastructure that's needed as a result of growth, that's dictated to us in Arizona revised statutes. For the wastewater portion of the project, 80% of the wastewater expenses will be paid by the rate payers, that was included in the last rate study. The replacement of this pipe and the installation of the new pipe were included in the IIP and the rates. Regardless of the alternative that we choose, it would be 80% of the cost for the wastewater portion. The impact fees would pay approximately 20% of the cost of the wastewater improvements. When it comes to the roadway portion of the project, it's a little bit different. The city collects a 1% street sales tax. Those funds are used for a multitude of things throughout the city related to streets. Approximately 70% of the 1 cent sales tax would pay for both of the widening alternatives. If we choose a non-widening alternative, then the street sales tax fund would pay 100% of the roadway costs, because as I mentioned, impact fees can only be paid for growth or expansion of a roadway. So 30% of the fee could be paid with impact fees in a widening scenario. And staff has put these dollars into our five-year capital plan. I believe we currently have $38 million between these four funds in our five-year capital plan for whatever decision we decide to make. In addition to that, staff and city manager's office...
So does that mean you have that amount set aside right now?
We do, Mayor.
Okay.
We do. For the full 38, we have 38 million in the budget today.
Yeah, I know, we've been collecting it for quite a number of years.
Yes, we have.
Councilmember Montoya?
Thank you, Mayor. Gwen, I had a question related to the road part on this slide here. That 30% from street impact fees in 3B and 5B, you mentioned that you can't use that if it's not like an expansion of a roadway. What happens to the money we've collected already if we go with 2B then?
So we have, the infrastructure improvement plan has 10, Ian, about 10 different projects in it, and those monies must be spent on one of those 10 projects.
So you would just shift that funding to one of those other projects?
We would.
Okay, thank you.
So in addition to our funds, city staff and city manager's office have been working on finding additional funding, because we know this is a regional roadway, and we were hoping for regional contributions toward a widening option if the city decides to go in that direction. So, very preliminary conversations with Yabba-Pay County, so I don't have a number there yet, but in 2025, we made a request for congressionally-directed spending, and we did have some sponsorship for that, but we were unsuccessful in 2025, so we will attempt to request that again in fiscal year 26, in the amount of $7 million. We also, through our partnership with Simbo, were added to Simbo's congressionally-directed spending request for fiscal year 26, in the amount of $4.9 million. So, Simbo annually requests money from the state of Arizona for regional projects within their particular areas, there are a number of MPOs throughout the state. So we're hopeful that we'll receive some funding from their monies they receive in fiscal year 2026. So, it's not necessarily a given that we will receive additional funding from these sources, but staff is working on those requests, and as I keep reminding, we're only at 15% design, so we have some time to continue to work on those requests, and hopefully we would receive some additional monies to offset the cost of this project. Any questions about that?
You know, we budgeted until 2:45 for this presentation, and I was hoping to be able to take some public comment, but we're now over that amount of time, so the, I'd like you to complete your presentation, and unless there's a particularly important question coming from council, I want the presentation to be completed, and hopefully you can ask your questions during the voting session.
Okay. I'm just going to wrap it up real quick. This is a recap of what Tim explained earlier in terms of our process, and the fact that we do not have a detailed financial breakdown of this project yet, because, one, we don't know which scenario we're choosing, and, two, we're not that far along in the design to be able to tell you. And this is just a recap of what we've talked about today. I won't go through every single one of these boxes, it's in the presentation, it'll be on the website, sr89improvements.com, but essentially, it kind of compares for you what you can expect if we widen now, what you can expect if we do not widen now, and potentially what you could expect if we widen later. We don't really know the widen later, all the answers to that. We don't really know the widen later, all the answers to that, because we don't know what the state law will be eight to 12 years from now for impact fees. We don't know if the state will be in a position to give the communities congressionally-directed spending money in eight to 12. We don't know, there's some things we just don't know for eight to 12 years from now. But, what we do know is that if we choose not to widen today, and that's an acceptable alternative to make, then we will put this widening back into the five- and 10-year capital plan for the years 2032, 34, 38. As we, we will continue to monitor and watch traffic conditions, and as they decline, this project will move forward into the capital program at a future date. The other thing that I think is important to note is that the construction constraints of this project will significantly differ between a widening option and a non-widening option. In the non-widening option, there will be road closures of this road, and they would be for extensive periods of time, four to six months at a minimum during the construction of this project, because there's simply nowhere to put traffic when you have to put three pipes in the ground. If we do a widening option, we would have the ability to keep traffic flow going through the corridor by building the additional traffic lanes first, and then installing the underground infrastructure, and shifting the traffic from one side of the corridor to the other. It doesn't mean one is right or one is wrong, I just want you to be aware that those are some of the, what I see and my staff sees are substantial implications to one choice or another. If there's any questions, we're happy to answer them. After this presentation, again, I strongly encourage the public to put their comments in through sr89improvements.com.
Thank you, Gwen, and for the members of the audience that were hoping to make some public comment, I apologize that this presentation went as long as it did, but we will hold your blue cards, and we'll keep them in the order they were submitted, so that you'll have a chance to ask your questions during the voting meeting. So, this meeting is adjourned, we'll reconvene at 3:00 PM for the voting meeting.